Okay, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. You might see a new face around the table this evening, our newly appointed Fire Chief, Joe Coughlin, is with us. So, we're excited. And Joe will do a great job. He's done the maps you have in front of you this evening, has revised voting precincts and council wards. Joe did a tremendous amount of job on this, a lot of work on this about three years ago, so we appreciate that. So, welcome, Joe. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we'll come to order. First order of business is reading and approval of the minutes from the workshop dated November 27th, 2023. I think everybody's had a copy of those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the workshop of November 27th. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, reading and approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting dated November 28th, 2023. We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting of November 28th. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, purchase of property adjacent to the rail trail to provide the city access to the northern part of the trail. Mr. Trump, would you like to explain that?
Yes, sir. With the new intersection from Royal Lakers, the city lost their access to the northern part of the rail trail. This property that is adjacent there, I contacted owner, Mr. Hert, and he had three parcels. We had those appraised. The two small parcels were 1,900 each, and then there was a larger parcel at $20,500. He, after talking to him, he said he would sell all three parcels for the appraised value of the larger one, and that would save the city $1,900 for a parcel for those other two, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Very good. Well, I appreciate Mr. Trump's work on this, along with all the other things that he does for the good of the city. And I think he struck a great deal, and it's very important to have access to the trail. Leslie, do you have any comments on that?
No, just now that we've talked about it, since we can't go through the whole day oil anymore, and for the guys for PW that really need to go and do any kind of work or know when, if there's a problem, we just don't have access to it, so we really do. And that, we looked long and hard and did too up through that whole thing, and that was the only place we could see, and we appreciated that we would get that. It's very beneficial.
Very good.
We hope to make a little parking lot, and it will be one of the trail pads that we're going to put signage at and open up as we proceed with our plans for the trail.
Right, and it's directly behind the dealership there, too, which is well lighted and provides more security, so, which is good. So, any other comments from council? If not, would entertain a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the purchase of the property described by Mr. Trump on the rail trail. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign.
Mayor, I might point out, there will be a second vote that will need to be taken at our next meeting on this, to purchase property. City has to have two votes on it.
Alrighty, we'll certainly do that. Very good. We have a motion and second to approve this on the first reading. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, approval of the map outlining the wards in the city. Mr. Trump and Chief, if you have any comments regarding the realignment of the wards. Billy, would you like to address this?
Certainly. Chief Coughlin and I started this several months ago, trying to determine, using the census data, how to even out the wards. We compiled the information, we submitted it to the county, and the county has the duty to make all of those districts as equal as possible. And I believe they hired a consulting firm to help them with, do that. And they produced finally, with the help of that consulting firm, from this map. And if you look carefully at it, Ward 1, Ward 2, and Ward 3 are essentially unchanged. There is a change with Ward 5, trying to make the population even. Part of Woodcrest is now part of Ward 5. So, that's really the only substantial change from the map that we've been using for the last 10 years that all you guys were elected with.
Okay.
Chief Coughlin, anything?
The only thing is, is the line through Woodcrest has to do with House of Delegates districts that they're bound to follow for their precinct boundaries. So, they had to cut that off and make it its own precinct, and by doing that, that gave them the opportunity to even the numbers of the ward.
Very good. Billy and I talked over today. I think sometime during my term on city council over a number of years, I think that all of Woodcrest at one time was in Ward 5, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess the realignment has further adjusted that, so we appreciate your hard work on that, and we understand the reality that we need to comply with our own thoughts, obviously, but also with what the county and the state requires. So...
Mayor, it looked like the population on each one of the wards is around 2,700, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't know what the final count was. She was trying to find, coming into courthouse, and she couldn't find it this week while I was, last week when I was there. So, she said it's more equal than it...
When you click on these from the map that Billy sent, it does recognize like 2,793, 2,745, you know, they're all right at that 2,700.
I, when Billy and I worked on it, we had it set up to do that and tell you what the totals were. Once we gave the data to the county and they forwarded it to their contractor, I don't know if they adjusted those. So, I don't know for sure that those numbers are true or correct.
Okay.
Once they adjusted it with the bounds they had to move, that was the explanation I got, was when they readjusted it to make the ward numbers match, they took that extra precinct of Woodcrest and added it back to Ward 5 to make the numbers even. There were some other moves. Ward 4 has migrated up since the 90s, and they put some of that back as well. There's a T there. So, that went back, and then once the numbers moved, I don't know what, the numbers I had were from what we came up with, and that layer is the layer that I gave them. I'm not sure they adjusted those numbers, but I can give them to you.
It's not important, I just...
I think that's, they should be about right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, Chief or Billy?
Mayor, it seems like some of the precincts have changed, so the county clerk's office will notify the citizens of the change of their precincts. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Any other comments? If not, would entertain a motion to approve the map outlining the wards in the city.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the realignment of the wards as presented, and again, we thank you, Chief and Billy, for your hard work on this. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, second reading of publication of an ordinance reducing speed on Hall Street to 15 miles an hour. Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We had the first reading on November 28th, and council approved it at that time. I will read this ordinance by title and then conduct a public hearing, and if anybody has any comments, they're certainly welcome to share those with us. This ordinance is titled, "An Ordinance to Provide for the Amendment to the Traffic Control Map Other Than Parking and Traffic Control File Amending the Speed Limit on Hall Street to 15 Miles per Hour." That's being reduced from 25 down to 15. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody in the audience, or they can be on the phone, have any comments, anyone has any comments to make, either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance.
I have something to say about that.
Okay, please.
Regardless of law, it comes down to enforcement. So, even if the reduction of the speed limit is passed, it needs to be enforced, and I don't know a person in this city or a neighborhood that does not deal with this type of problem. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Yes, please.
Many of you, many of you know these politicians, but politics is not why I've been up here for several months. My neighbors and I, myself as a family man, I watch my children, my grandchildren, we live on this street. We play on this street. We leave every morning, every evening to go to and from there. And this has been an issue for many years, even before I lived there. As I've said several times, the speed limit reduction is not a permanent fix. It's not going to fix everything, but we're hoping it raises awareness, so someone will at least think when they're coming through their hay, maybe we should slow down. At one time, this was 15 miles per hour. We had a deaf child on the street, and it was 15 for some time. So, that's all we're asking for again, is to help build awareness, to go back to what was there before.
I should have asked in advance, but I didn't. Would you identify yourself, just for the record?
I'm Tom Lazzlo.
Okay, Tom, and ma'am, would you just say your name for the record?
Christine Anderson.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make, either in favor of or in opposition? Yes, sir, in the back row there.
The VA has one of those machines that, you know, as you drive, and it tells you what your speed is, you know? And a lot of people think that those machines take the picture, and, you know, so, I mean, is it possible that to put one of those out there for the first time and make people to have more awareness? And would that help to even own those things? Does the city own any of those kind of things that could put out and, you know, check the speed and then flash the number up, go fast?
The city in the past has owned several of those. Whether we have any that are operating today, I'm not sure. I do not think we do.
That's one thing, I was going to mention that for, the same thing for, I'll get that quickly, my free minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
Let's see, Anthony, do we have anybody online who would like to make a comment under public comments?
Those who are not will come.
We'll close the public hearing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, very good. This is the second reading and public hearing of the ordinance reducing speed limit on Hall Street to 15 miles an hour. I would entertain a motion to accept this on the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the reduction of the speed limit on Hall Street to 15 miles an hour. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Thank you. Next, first reading of an ordinance rezoning 16.00, or 603 acres, actually, in Pinecrest Park. And I think that this involves the proper zoning for the Veterans Administration nursing home. So, Mr. Fowler, would you take that on?
Be glad to. Yes, tonight will be the first reading of this ordinance. This is an ordinance that codifies what was approved by the City of Beckley Planning Commission during their meeting on October 3rd. What this ordinance does is it does rezone property from the M Manufacturing District to B1 Neighborhood Highway Business District. The reason that's having to be done is M District does not provide for long-term care facilities, and B1 does provide for that, so this will permit this property that we are asking to be rezoned to be used as a long-term care facility for veterans in this area. And this ordinance is titled, "An Ordinance Amending the City of Beckley Zoning Ordinance of 1971 and the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Beckley and the Zone Map of the City of Beckley As From Time to Time Has Been Amended to Provide for the Rezoning of 13.603 Acres Located Along With Road Loop in the City of Beckley As Shown on Tax Map 49, Parcel 12, Beckley Corporation Within the City of Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, From M Manufacturing District to B1 Neighborhood Highway Business District." And if approved and I on first reading, this matter will be scheduled at the next regular meeting for second reading, at which time there will be a public hearing on the rezoning issue. Mayor?
Thanks very much, Mr. Fowler. I wouldn't downplay this ordinance on the first reading. I think it is a housekeeping measure that allows the city to comply with proper zoning for a veterans' nursing home that I think we'll all be very proud of once it's construction, construction up and operation. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as described by Mr. Fowler on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the ordinance regarding the rezoning as described by Mr. Fowler. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Then, old business. Okay, the next, the next council meeting is actually scheduled two weeks from tonight, which is the day after Christmas on the 26th. So, our last meeting, I asked for any input, which I, from any council member, which I did not hear, and I think being the day after Christmas, and if we don't have any pressing issues for that meeting, I would declare that we cancel that meeting, given the fact that it comes up the day after Christmas. So, along those lines, I would like to congratulate Cam Johnson, the son of our general manager of the Beckley Sanctuary Board, Jeremiah Johnson, who last night stepped up at the City of Beckley dinner to actually make his presence known, and he has a project that he has undertaken, which kind of, I don't know if it replaces or amplifies the former Max Toy Fund, but Cam has taken the lead on a program that would provide toys for one of our, one of our city elementary schools, that by numbers would qualify for that sort of, that sort of contribution. So, last night, Cam was introduced by the recipient, Richard Gerald, of the Spirit of Beckley Award, and was encouraged to go through the crowd to raise money for this. And believe it or not, he raised $3,600 last night. Isn't that great? Yeah. So, next, City Manager of Form of Government Ordinance. We have decided to, it has become more, far more complicated and contentious than I ever imagined as mayor. I thought after about four workshops where I thought we had a nod of the head to move forward with this, it's become, it's become, well, far more contentious. We have one councilperson who wasn't comfortable with this council providing that vote for future councils. We have two folks who appreciate their input on making it more public and sending it basically to a referendum. We have some interested members of the city who have indicated that they are in opposition to it, to the point that if it was passed, they have, they've informed our outside council that they would, they have attorneys in, on hand to file a suit in opposition to that. So, with that, it's not on the agenda this evening. After consulting with our legal people, it's been decided that it will come back on the agenda for the January 9th meeting, the first meeting in January, to be voted up or down, up or down, or tabled, and to move ahead with the, with the plans to, with council's approval to present it on the May 14th referendum. So, that's kind of where we are on that. That's all I have under old business. Anybody else have anything under old business?
Mayor, I do have something. A few council meetings ago, before there was any decision based upon the 15 mile an hour for Hall Street, you had made a comment that I don't care to do 15 mile an hour in Hall and LaRue, but it never got to that. I do know that you are opposed for, for humps and bumps. What would be the, would it be a terrible thing if we chose to lower LaRue to 15 mile an hour? We had constituents that presented a petition, a lot of residents at LaRue. Would that be something possible?
Personally, I'm opposed to it. When you compare LaRue with Hall Street, it's totally different. LaRue, and I've checked with the Board of Education and the number of vehicles that the board uses, not only school buses, but other, it's a relatively straight road. It is a road with a double center line. Chief, do you have any comments on LaRue compared to Hall Street?
I think the study that was completed pretty much meets volumes, in my opinion.
Yeah. We have an extensive DOH study, unbeknownst to all residents on LaRue, so that it wouldn't, the study wouldn't be affected by those who might choose to drive faster, to drive, you know, to drive more frequently, but I would personally oppose it, and I think that people from Public Works and our police department and the administration, having gone to the trouble to contact DOH to conduct this traffic and speed study.
Well, you don't love to ask, so I just felt I needed to...
As Billy Trump says, if you never ask, the answer is always no. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm glad you appreciate.
Very good. Anything else from any member of council under old business? Anything from any member of council under new business?
Mayor, I do have a question. Since the comprehensive plan, I'm not saying contingency plans, that's the Bureau of Prisons term there. So, the comprehensive plan, since it has expired, the 10-year plan, when would that be discussed?
Well, actually, we're in the process now. We're working with our CDBG consultant, who has agreed to guide us in that comprehensive plan. Cory Lilly, who will be leaving us soon, but will be replacing Cory, has also been very involved, but you're right, it's time to present our plans for a new comprehensive plan. So, it's in the works.
Mayor, I have something else, and Cory Lilly will be leaving us. Are there any plans to, if trying to replace him is going to be big shoes to fill?
We had interviews today, we have another one tomorrow, yeah. He's got some big shoes to fill. He's done a great job.
He has.
And Cory's very involved in the, part of his separation and transition plan, and he wrote this self-requignment, that he would be available for six months, and part of that transition plan was to help interview his replacement. So, he's gone to WVU to work under the Brad and Elise Smith Outdoor Economic Development Program, so we're going to miss Cory, but the good thing is, City of Beckley will still be in his territory statewide to continue to help with things that he had been involved with, and he's agreed to, you know, train his replacement, so that's good.
Let me just, may I clarify something you said? Max Toy Fund has not been replaced, that's just actually what Cam Johnson is doing, is to help Mab Scott Elementary.
Yeah.
Max Toy Fund is still in existence. People write grants to Beckley Area Foundation and the Board of Max Toy Fund. We, we have those grants, and we did about $40,000 worth of grants to 17 nonprofits this year.
Great.
That all help children in our community.
You were treasurer of that organization at one time.
I still am.
Oh, okay, yeah. I remember that. Very good.
Mayor, if I may...
Sure.
Thank you. I want to thank Leslie Baker. She reminded me, of course, to put me back in touch with Crystal Alonso. Mr. Reedy was his vigil, and I caught one encampment. But I tell you, I appreciate everyone looking, especially around the businesses. There's a secondary encampment behind Jim Sheetzly's structure, up on a pedestal of raised earth, directly behind him and between the trail and where his structure has in the back. And I've ran people off from there who are starting fires, but I connected with the Raleigh County Community Action, and within a number of hours, literally, they went out, interviewed the man. He absolutely refused assistance, but assistance was given. And, you know, I was able to photograph pictures of, I mean, it literally, pop-up tents popping up all over our town, and these, I mean, this isn't a mist, this thing's covered in ice, and this person could easily freeze to death, but I'm happy that we have organizations and that are so caring, that stepped up and tried to help this person out. I'll be forwarding you their information, because, you know, we tried voluntarily to find something more accommodating, but this is a danger, and this is right where they were starting fires last winter to keep themselves warm. And that segues me really quickly to the other item, which is the warming station. Thank you. Sherri Hunter, you're amazing. I know it's not a Beckley-run program per se, but everyone who's interested in saving lives this winter, if you have four hours in the middle of the night, we'll do another makeshift training to catch people up. Four-hour blocks, you show up, and literally, it's the one thing you can do that you know you're saving someone's life. We're starting to open them up. I've seen folks sleeping on, on Main Street here and there when the warming center hasn't been open, so I would encourage all of the members of the public that do want to make a difference to volunteer your three or four hours that you can give in the nights when we're at freezing temperatures, and I really appreciate anyone supporting that initiative.
Thank you, Robert.
Anything else from any member of council under new business? Okay, we're down to public comments, and it appears that Mary West is number one on the list.
Good evening, once again, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. President.
I am back again to kindly ask why nothing is being done for LaRue, because it's in Ward 5, number one, a red line area. And I'm also going to say, it is wrong that we need to come out of the 1600s and come on into society now, because this ward thing should never be anyway. And if you want to know for real, for real, why don't you add Ward 6? That'd be a whole lot more pleasanter. You can add Ward 6, which would be a mental ward, because somebody definitely needed, and it's not me. I am tired of coming here asking to have something done on my street, and then, you mayor, I oppose. I've been here for years, and I'm not going to keep on walking to you people, asking you to do something for me. I don't have to beg anyone for anything, because I'm going to ask my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ to help handle this situation, because it's getting to be monotonous. And Ward 5 should not be suffering because we have less voters than 1, 2, 3, 4. We ought to be on the same level. Anything that comes into 1, 2, 3, and 4 need to come into 5 as well. Don't keep on half-stepping with us. And I want to know one thing from everybody else. What is the Animal Control Unit all about? Because I got cats and kittens underneath my building, and I don't have any animals. So, who do I call? Ghostbusters? Because I sure can't call Animal Control. I called today, and they don't do anything with cats. I've heard other people say, they say they don't do anything with dogs. So, what are they there for? We're not animals. They don't have to control us. But two weeks ago, they come down and got a, they tried to get a kitten out of a drain down there on my street, because the lady next door called. But this week, they don't do anything with cats or kittens, kittens. So, I got plenty of them under there, so somebody need to come and get them. I don't want to hurt an animal, and I don't want to hurt a person. So, you all give me some help, please. So you all give me some help, please, and thank you very much.
Tina Pinnell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing the Beckley Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, and we will be having... Well, we will be inviting the community out for an advanced screening of The Color Purple. And the date of that will be Saturday, December 16th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Marquee Theaters. And I'll repeat that again. It's an advanced screening of The Color Purple on Saturday, December 16th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Marquee Theater or Cinemas. And the price is $10.25 plus tax. And you can purchase your tickets on site. All right? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
When I see Tina, I always have to think that she and our second daughter, Leanne, were state high school cheerleader champions in, what, 1985? Yeah.
Eighty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of my oldest daughter, yeah. Eighty-nine, yeah. So, great. Thanks, Tina.
Thank you.
Gina Sernuto.
I just wanted to thank you all for the truck that you purchased for the Board of Public Works. It went to the Community Pride. And I just wanted to show I appreciate.
Well, great. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something? I knew I recognized you from somewhere. I kept saying, "I know her from somewhere." She's a hard worker for Community Pride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Smith.
Okay, first minute. LaRue, why can't you have two speed limits? One for the daytime, when there's a problem, and one for night, when people are actually driving faster? Because that's what I remember the report said. So have two speed limits. You could probably do that for a lot of streets. There's a speed limit for the daytime, and a speed limit for nighttime. And then, like we were talking about those things, you put them out there at either side of the road, and then it warns people. Because some people are just driving, they're not thinking, and they speak. But if they see that flashing thing that says, "Hey, you're speeding," good people will slow down. Good, not good or bad. But people shouldn't think it's okay to break the law a little bit. Is a little bit of shoplifting, lifting, okay? No. Is a little bit of murder, okay? No. So a little bit of speeding isn't okay. That's all I got to say about that. Okay, second thing. The trail, McManus Trail. Now, I walk it only for part of it, coming down Gennaha, and I take that trail. And I'm older now, and I have physiological needs. And I usually have to have those needs before I get to the end of the trail, where there's a bathroom. Okay? So I really don't feel like, you know, exposing myself in public. So I know that there's already somebody out there that's doing a... Giving y'all a bid to fix something out there. I'm not sure what they're doing. Is it cameras? Is that what that is, on the trail? Cameras? How about bathrooms, like one? I checked with the company that rents them, and a porta-potty's like $225 a month. One porta-potty, maybe in the middle. And, you know, people will... "Oh, people do drugs in there?" Whatever. Come on. It'll be a bathroom, so that people don't have to expose themselves along the park. Because, I mean, I don't know, if a bicyclist stops, where's he going to go to the bathroom? They have to go to the bathroom in the middle. Have you ever had that problem, anyone? Okay, maybe not. Okay, so, what else? Mother Teresa once said, "If you can't feed and house and clothe 100 homeless people, then do it for just one. Do it for just one." Now, if all these churches we have are empty all through the week, until Sunday, did it for just one, maybe we wouldn't have so many people on the street. I'm done.
Danielle Stewart.
Hello, Danielle Stewart. Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak. I'll probably ramble a little. I've been driving all day, and I have not had time to write some of this stuff down. But first, I want to say, you know, thank you for your attention on this matter with the city manager. I think that we're going to get a lot more buy-in from the city by putting that on the ballot, and then the people decide what form of government that they want. In the end, what we need is the community's buy-in on what the city's doing if we want our city to thrive. On that note, you know, some of the numbers that were tossed around last time as far as salaries for city council, mayor, under that. I think that city council ought to consider a contingency ordinance that will take effect if the city does decide to go with the city manager, as far as salaries for city council and the mayor. The numbers I came up with were 7,200 for city council, and that's based off of $30 an hour for 20 hours a month. I figure with 10 hours a month dedicated to the various meetings, 10 hours for constituent services, and then 14,400, double that for the mayor, because there would be more expectations for the mayor to do more events. So it's really 40 hours a month for the mayor. And to have that put in, so that if the city does decide to have a city manager, the next city council and mayor will be able to implement that as soon as possible. Speed bumps, like I said, I'm rambling a little. Intersection of Marion and Vine, we've had a speed bump there. City maintained, city put in 20-some years. Still there, have been there. Lars Noble will stay there. There's been... Nobody ever talked about it. So, you know, we do have to see at least one speed bump that city maintains, city owns, within the city limits. Which then brings me to agreement that there are issues with speeding across, LaRue being one of them. But any number of streets, people have come in here and talked. Maybe a less invasive would be like the rumble strips that you see on the highways on the side, so that people know when they're going over. I'm not for sure how that would affect with snow plows, but my guess is, since it's being done on the highways, the impact is relatively minimal. And maybe that's something to consider. That's not a speed bump. It's not really a speed impediment. But, you know, when you go over them, you know that, kind of what speed that you're going, just by the sound that you go over it. Again, thank you all very much.
Very good. Tom Mosley.
I won't take long. I just wanted to thank everyone again for the research that was done. I know a lot of Chief Bailey's men and women were out there several days, several evenings. I got to say hello to them on the way in and out of the house, doing research, and it was much appreciated. And I just want to take a minute to thank all of you for that, for passing that adjustment.
Thank you. Anthony, wait. Anybody signed up to public comments over the phone or computer?
We do have a couple people.
Okay, I'll read these instructions. If calling in by phone, dial *3 to raise your hand to be acknowledged to speak. If connected by computer, click the hand icon on your participants panel. Do we have anybody who desires to speak?
No, sir. There's not anybody.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.